Okay, six thirty, I want to call this meeting of the Joshua City Council to order. We do have a forum present. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise for our pledges to the American or Texas flags and please remain standing for the invitation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
For Jesus, we thank you, God, for your goodness and mercy. We thank you for our community and our community leaders, those elected and appointed. We pray tonight, God, that you would have your perfect will in this meeting, that everything be done in love and compassion. We give you glory, we give you honor, let your will be done, it be done all, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank Pastor Kowen. Okay, our first item of business on the work session. Review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statement for September twenty twenty four, Mr. Peacock.
Thank you, Mayor, these numbers you see today are not quite year end totals, they're still putting that stuff together. One of the things to call your attention to is tax revenues of one hundred and nine point five eight percent. There are some, uh, some things coming in that were, I guess, over collections from what we basically anticipated for the last fiscal year. You'll see some of those coming in, makes it look kind of like a windfall, but it's not. So don't, don't be deceived. And then the other big thing is the license permits and fees permitting, the numbers remain down as was the trend last year. So if we've made that adjustment in the, the new current fiscal year budget, but everything else is panning out and it looks like probably in November, you will see year end closeout numbers. She's gonna be close to see if we get them all done, but it could be December, but we're shooting for next month.
You might have any questions on the financial?
No, sir.
No? Okay, thank you, Mike. Item number two, discuss the speed limit reduction on FM nine seventeen from FM one seventy four to FM nineteen oh two. It's as requested by Mr. Scott Atwood, Mr. Peacock.
So I'm, I'm gonna send out some of these, I'll put some numbers together. We set up traffic counters as requested, once we saw the request. We've reached out to TechStop, we visited with them one day this past week. And so the counters that we sent out, while it does show a pretty significant increase in the amount of traffic, it didn't show much in the way of, of enforcement, meaning that it didn't really trigger any of the components that initiate traffic calming measures for us. But there are some mitigating factors there, too. There's quite a few houses that driveways come in and out of, of nine seventeen, there's traffic that backs up into that roadway, which I don't recommend, but, and there's also an enforcement issue. It's difficult to, to enforce along that road because there's nowhere to pull cars over. So for law enforcement to, to pull them over, there's no shoulder, they're, they're half in the road and half out of the road, it's just not safe. The traffic, the daily counts for, for nine seventeen hour, over eleven thousand cars a day on, based on a seven day average. And the speed limits, like I said, didn't really show that much, but the turning traffic is increasing, no doubt, down there, and it's going to continue to increase as Mockingbird develops. What TechStop told us was that they, they are in receipt of the letter. They typically, when they get these requests, do their, their own traffic studies, which we've seen them do in a, a number of areas. They have recently counted nine seventeen a few months ago, when they participated in the Johnson County Transportation Project. But they are not, they do not have any plans to recount it until all the construction is finished. There's construction zones out there now that they're, they're waiting on some utilities to be moved for two more, for the culvert replacements, and then they'll start. They're gonna redo the roadway and put a turn lane, a middle, middle turn lane from our city limits, through our city limits down to nineteen oh two. And, um, once that's done, then, then he said that he, they'd be happy to entertain looking at traffic counts. I didn't get the indication that, that there is any interest right now in making any changes currently, but that, that door was open once the, the work is finished. As far as our city limits goes, I don't see that there's really an issue if you guys want to request that we lower it in our city limits. They would have the final say because it is a state roadway. I don't think it's gonna impair traffic much for us. And I saw, I, I'm not opposed to lowering it, if y'all direct us to do that, we'll put the letter together, send it to them. But I think still, until they do their own study, I don't think they'll give us an answer on, on whether they would lower it, whether they wouldn't. That, and Kristen, Kristen was in the conversation, too, you can add to it if you got anything any different, but I don't feel like right now that there's much motivation to change it while it's under construction. At least that's the impression I got.
Mr. Atwood, enjoyed your letter and, and, and all the information you put there, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yeah, I would. So, um, first of all, I'm a licensed engineer, I worked at TechStop before. Several things. So I was working on a construction project, it's in South Arlington. There was this, this discussion that came up about roadway that I was working on. And, um, I was an accident, got buried. Messed me up pretty good. Right after that, they, TechStop lowered the speed limit. It wasn't because of the accident that I was in, it was, had been in the process. So I have a personal experience with that. Also, um, I've done traffic control planning for road construction and recently there was an accident out there. I did not, I don't think I knew the individual, but I had worked with the contractor that was out there. So, uh, I have experience with that. As licensed engineer, I feel like that we have responsibility for the public. I saw that this was an issue, I feel like it's an issue, and I think it needs to be addressed. I do own property with a partner, it's on nine seventeen, inside Joshua there, and it's where the construction yard is, yeah, this, at right now. So I have a professional and a personal responsibility to bring it to the city and to TechStop. The other interesting thing is on the front set of plans that we, on the top of the letter that y'all have, it shows the design speed of roadway, that that road was designed, the road was initially designed, and the subsequent improvements that have gone on. The design speed is forty miles an hour. Posted speed, I've kind of, I've gone back both directions. From Chisholm Trail coming towards Joshua, it's fifty five, it's posted at fifty five miles an hour. Above forty, do you feel? When you come into Joshua, there's the posted speed limit of fifty miles an hour. And then it drops down to thirty right at Santa Fe, right at the road turns. As you're heading back westbound, it goes, it's forty five miles an hour right at the, at, um, at Santa Fe. And there's no posted speeds out that direction. From my experience, law enforcement can only enforce the last posted speed that's visible. So here has this disconnect between forty five, fifty, fifty five miles an hour in Berlson. Now, I understand this, this Joshua to go on the way, I've been in Joshua here. But I talked with the city of Berlson, and they said they were going to take the lead with what TechStop proposed. So I present this to you, I appreciate you taking this into consideration.
Thank you, Scott.
One, one more thing, Mayor, I want to make sure that I did y'all clear on, our traffic calming policies are designed to count and, and service residential streets, not a road with this speed limit on it. So the fact that it didn't trigger any of our points that we would look at, at, at doing something is not all that surprising because that, ours is mostly geared for residential streets that are posted at thirty miles per hour. So there, there is a difference in what we normally deal with versus this. With, TechStop did indicate they would like to see our counts, and so we're gonna make those available to them. Like I said, if, if you want a letter attached for making a request that we lower it, then I'm happy to do that. I don't have an issue with it, but that, that would be in our city limits only, as, as what he was saying. So I, I, I mean, the way I, I can do however you want to do it, but.
Tony, what do you think?
Mayor, I think it's a state highway and it belongs to TechStop and it's gonna be under construction for quite a while, so I really think we are, heard that TechStop, that's what they do, and it is a state highway.
Mike?
I don't have a problem at all of lowering the speed limit to what we have an effect with, the area that we have an effect with. I don't, however, like the, what he said about different speed limits, if you're coming into town or going out of town, it, it needs to be more
Consistent.
Consistent, so I wouldn't have a problem with, with lowering it to, to accommodate that and, and make it a little bit safer, at least to our city limit.
Angela? I'm actually in agreement with that because I do drive that way quite a bit and it, it is kind of inconsistent, the speed limit is inconsistent.
That's the only bad thing I see, but we need to make it consistent, leave them down, but once you get out there close to Chisholm Trail, it turns to fifty five mile an hour, people are gonna go, I know they go faster than fifty five now, so without TechStop doing something to help them, I, I don't see a real working problem here. Although I'd like to slow it down a little bit, but I don't think people are gonna pay attention to our signs, you know?
Um, I mean, I think that we need definitely have some consistency exiting and entering the town, but then again, with the construction, I think there is posted signs out there reducing for the construction zone, is there not? No, are there not, is the construction workers not reducing their own, reducing their speed limits in their zones?
And what's, they take that direction, what is on their comparison plans, and it's not showing the construction plans.
Yeah, and then defer to TechStop, I mean, obviously this letter has been sent to TechStop, right? Yeah, so they're aware, but hopefully they'll step in and do something.
So somebody who utilizes that Mockingbird turn in quite frequently, it is, it is excessive. It is excessive. And if you are stopped at a train and you top that hill at fifty five miles an hour, and it's, it is, it is, in my opinion, it's excessive. What I at first thought was because we have the mismatched speed, I'm typically coming the other way, I thought it was forty five. And that's why I was like getting here, because I went around and it is not. And so I do agree that, and especially at least until you get to that hill, um, in my opinion, fifty five is excessive just because of the number of, especially whenever you get into school traffic and school buses and everything, that traffic gets backed up on nine seventeen, and it does back up to that hill, and you cannot see when you top that hill. Um, so I, 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 I agree with you completely. At a minimum, they need to match both ways, but I, I, I don't disagree with you at all.
That, that was my thought. We need to have consistent, you know, it's, it's ridiculous, you got one speed going out of town and another speed coming into town in the same areas.
Yeah, we'll look into that and find out which one of those was the last adopted speed.
Uh, I, I think we should, should consider within the city limits where, where we do have some say, w- w- we ought to try to slow it down a little bit. Because those, those people living in Mockingbird that coming off Chisholm Trail going home, until they get the turn lane put in there, they're
It's gonna be a while.
Yeah, it's gonna be a while. And, and then, you know, the underpass, if they ever start it, traffic, there's gonna be even wilder. So I, I would not be opposed to, from city limit in, starting at forty five miles an hour and, or dropping it to, to even, you know, forty or thirty.
I was surprised that it was fifty all the way to, to the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
I was, I, I was thinking, no, it's, I, I really thought you were wrong, and I drove it and I was like, yeah.
Is there a, is there a possibility of getting a temporary reduction in speed until TechStop makes the
Well, he says that, he told us that there was a construction zone speed posted, but I didn't see the number out there.
I've never seen one.
I, I haven't, I, I've seen work zone signs, but I've not seen a speed limit.
They're leaving it down.
They normally lower the speed limit in construction zones.
Yeah.
And it's a higher price on a ticket when you violate.
If they're in the, if they're in the zone, yeah, I know they are. We'll reach out to them again and check the limit, but we can put a letter together asking that they consider reducing it in, inside the city limits and we can
Do we have, do we need to decide on?
We need, we need a consensus on what we think it ought to drop to, so we can just get it all to them at once, instead of, will you let us do it and then have to go back and say, well, you approved this? So what, what would you think?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it alone. It's gonna be under construction and they're gonna lower the speed limit while it's under construction, ain't a waste of time.
I say forty.
It's family, whatever we want to do, I'm, I'm all in the grins with it. It's a danger trap out there, but, you know, people, I just don't think, people are gonna pay much attention to it, they're gonna come off that Chisholm Trail flying, you know?
Yeah.
They don't want to not do something though, because we assume people are not gonna
No, no, I understand that, it's just that the two separate speed zones is what bothers me, you know, they're gonna look at the fastest and they're gonna go the fastest, if not more.
Well, but the, the count shows that the majority of people are driving the speed limit, so one would assume that they're following the posted speed limit, so they're, they're gonna follow what's posted. And fifty miles an hour is too fast in that area.
Is, is that because of the backup of traffic, don't you think? At the times that we're taking the surveys?
I, no, no, the, the counter was out for seven days, twenty four hours a day straight, so it's catching, and it breaks down individual hours. Um, so, you know, you can see the high points and low points, but, you know, there, the last time we counted that road, the traffic count for a little over eighty five hundred a day, now they're over eleven thousand. And it's gonna be higher once Mockingbird's built out, so.
True.
Yeah.
The total?
We can send it and keep the conversation.
I think we need to lower it, I don't know what exact speed, forty five, forty? So?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement with it. I'm, I'm taking it, I'm him at his word as far as what it was intended, I mean, but as somebody who utilizes that
Well, it does, it says that on the plans.
If it's forty, then I would recommend forty, if that's what smarter people than me have recommended.
So we could send a letter to TechStop and ask them if they would allow us to drop that speed limit from city limits?
I'll draw the letter, I'll have you sign it, it'll, that will mean more coming from you.
Well, I mean, should we, it, it's coming in too, I mean, drop it, drop it a little sooner to thirty, like when you get the residential houses?
Like, uh, just west of Eddie?
Or where are you guys talking to go forty from, I mean, from the railroad tracks all the way to
Yeah, for the railroad, railroad tracks out to Eddie, do about, keep it at thirty, and then go up to forty, right around to Eddie, right around where Scott's property is.
To the city limits, that'll get it beyond Mockingbird, and beyond the hill.
But do we want it forty coming up on that railroad track?
Well, it'll drop to thirty before it gets to railroad track.
Yeah. And that, that would be on this side of Eddie, then it would drop to thirty.
Okay, that makes sense.
So start forty, Eddie on out to the city limits and thirty for coming in to the railroad track.
There's some teeth chatter bumps up there.
You know how much your phone money is for that?
All right, so, uh, why don't you go ahead and
Get dental insurance.
Draft the letter, we seem to have the majority of the councils in agreement with that, and we'll, we'll sign it soon and see what TechStop tells us.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, next item is discussion on the proposed policy two point five covered applications of prohibited technology, Peacock? Mrs. Benson?
Brittany's gonna present it, I do have Jeff Rainey here, if y'all have any, uh, direct IT related questions.
Brittany loves talking to y'all.
So, uh, two point five is, is the package, and that is gonna be a new policy for us. This is gonna be in response to a Senate bill that was like, well, somewhat recently passed. Uh, that Senate bill gives us a deadline of November plan to have this policy in place. And what this policy does is it is regulating the fact that TikTok and other social media sites can't be installed on government public release devices, and now we are monitoring that to ensure that they are not. And so the policy that you'll see was taken from a draft policy that T M L presented, done through U P S. So a lot of the language and stuff is from that, Terry has reviewed it. We are hoping to get a management system where we can make that management automated. That's why IT is here, right now it's gonna be very manual in nature, it's been randomly checked, we don't have the, the
Any questions?
Sounds good.
It'd be common practice.
Uh, very, very common practice, however, I've got, I do have a question. We, as a city, give a cell phone allowance to our employees. Instead of issuing each employee their own cell phone and so on, does this policy affect their personal phones? Okay? So technically, if we are paying them for their cell phones, aren't we leasing those phones? No?
No.
Okay. Is, is there any possibility that if they're
Access the network.
Can, can they access the network from those sites? So, so TikTok being on somebody's private phone is totally okay? Okay, and the, this new technology would
Device management will keep off of it, you know, because they have TikTok on the device.
Okay.
And it also provides us several other tools, too, if we had a city device that was lost or stolen, we can wipe it remotely. We can, it, it helps me a lot because I manage the cell phones and, you know, now you've got to deal with pass codes and Apple logins. And if they're locked and they have the Find My turned on, then I'm sitting on the phone with Apple for a good amount of time unlocking the devices, so we can either reuse them or free them, and so. There is a split, most, most people have this stipend, but there are a handful that have city devices.
Is there, or what's the, the cost for this technology to, to do the monitoring?
I don't know, I think they're doing the, the SIM counts now, so I don't
So much per SIM?
Well, so I spoke to Apple, I, I called Apple because, and this is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have an Apple business account, um, that hosts the M B M itself, which can either be an Apple mobile device management, or it could be a third party. Um, Apple did provide me with pricing, but they would only be able to manage Apple devices. Um, for a single device, it would be two ninety nine per month. For multi-devices, up to, I think it was two or three devices, it was six ninety nine a month. We do have, I think, maybe two Androids, both of which are ready for an upgrade. I mean, worst case, I upgrade them, put them on iPhone, but they're working on finding some other alternatives. They're about to have to do something similar with our police department as well, which my understanding for the time being will be two separate M D Ms because of the restrictions are a little bit different.
They would take away your SIM cards that you have in the current ones, or the police cable, it will expire, the E S D, you have one in there, and then you won't have mobile device management. If you use the Apple device, you won't have the same SIM card management for all the devices, you just have iPhone or tablet.
And then another challenge is gonna be, um, the device has to have iOS sixteen point oh one, or point one, or newer to be able to manage it. So again, we'd be back to, I know that the fire department's got some older, um, like first gen iPads that they just use for um, the one app that they have wanted, uh, so we would still have to do random checks on those, because they're just, they're aged out.
So we don't even have a ballpark figure what we're talking money wise?
There are some, there's some other options out there, I think, um, I, all I know is the Apple pricing, I do have pricing. I'd actually met with Patrick from Total Verity many months ago, looking for a mobile device management system, and it, the one that he had introduced me to, in my opinion, was a little bit pricey, but another one of those mandates where we're gonna have to find something, and I don't have the capability manually to do it or to create something in-house to do it, so. I'm just gonna have to comb through and do the research, Jeff and his crew have already been looking to, so.
We found four, so we're trying to get all four options, and then just find out what it is.
That's really a separate issue, the policy's the policy, so.
Well, we will have to amend the policy once we do find a true mobile device management system, but that's easy enough.
Okay.
Real quickly, it, the management system, if, if the employee stop and phones, you know, you say it won't affect them unless they use the apps or the programs, like if they, if they download the, the program or something, are they gonna be regulated?
If they download it on a personal device, they won't have access to that.
They don't have access, that's what I'm getting at.
It basically prevents all access for anything that has, that adds to that application on anybody.
That's what I'm getting at, thank you.
So any personal device with a stipend would not be in the M D M?
It couldn't be because of the lock.
So, so if they were using their phone for the city, then suddenly they, they download that, they're locked out, they can't get into it.
They won't be on the city network, they'll still be able to use their phone and do the things they want.
Receive calls, texts, that kind of stuff. Okay.
Can you explain like exactly what the network, what you mean on a network basis, because I think that might be
So they wouldn't be able to be on the city Wi-Fi network, they wouldn't be able to access different applications within the city network, like, I mean, name them, there's a million of them, but kind of keeping anything like
Payroll, any of those.
Anything that would be accessed through the city servers, their Wi-Fi, their camera system, the access control, anything like that would not be accessible on their device.
And there will be a setup to that, because they're gonna have to identify all of those systems within there, so there will be implementation as well.
How would that impact if you had visitors that came in for whatever purpose and they needed to connect to, um, the city network or something?
Yes, so the S F I Ds or the I Ds for the public internet is completely different than the internal city network, so they would have to stay on the guest network.
So we have a city devices, the Wi-Fi, and then we have a hotspot, it's a guest network.
Any more questions?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, we've had the discussion on this, at this time, I think it's later in the agenda to
Actually, take action.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brittany. Okay.
I'll have any more.
We'll go to item four then and talk about longevity pay. No, I think we're good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, well, that would be just for paying to budget that we passed. Um, we had to, so long done we pay in limited cash. So we discussed adding a line stating that we would reduce the rate and the maximum annually. And so, and we didn't specify what the maximum was or what the rate was. We just kept that language in there so that through the budget process over the year. But the only change, so the guideline is.
So we would, we would have the ability each budget year to set what the maximum accrual is. There, there would be no cap unless we decided to cap it that year or what. Okay. Alright, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. See how good you are. We don't even have questions. Okay, uh, this time I'm gonna go to updates from the mayor and council members and updates from any staff, city staff members. Anybody have anything they want to update us on? It's been kind of an interesting month. Uh, I was invited to speak to the Staples Leadership Class. Um, at the Staples Elementary School, uh, was very interesting. Have fifteen young minds there that, uh. Are trying to become leaders within the school and, uh, that little bit of a safety patrol, uh, the ones that raise and lower the flags. Um, it was a very interesting, very interesting group to speak to and, and be around. Um, then attend the Navy Ball. Uh, if you've never had a chance to attend the Navy Ball, you need to. It is an awesome experience. Um, very, very proud of what our R O T C students are doing, uh, there in Joshua. And, uh, I think that's about it for me. Any staff have anything they want to tell us about?
Mayor, just remind everyone for the November election, early voting starts October twenty-first.
Other question?
For early voting, you can vote in any location in Johnson County. Election day, you have to go to your precinct. The closest location. Um, for us, early voting is the boroughs inside of Portales.
And please remind all of your family, friends and neighbors to get out and vote too. It is a responsibility that we all have. Yes, sir.
You want to talk about the drug takeback program? Chief? They're gonna be operating the drug takeback program on October seventh, I believe, at the H U B parking lot. It's been a successful program in the past. I did it one year and we put a little box. Description minutes.
Did H U B or Brokers, chief?
I'm sorry, Brokers. Sorry, I live in Burleson, the grocery store. Yeah, it's a successful program and it's helpful to people, so we'll be doing that. Thank you.
Quick update on the chamber. Um, we did get all the required tax returns filed. We're just waiting for them to be processed. So, and they've already started working on the, um, the five oh one C six application as well.
Uh, the chamber luncheon, uh, quarterly luncheon, uh, was a really great event. If you've not been into the James Event Center, since the new people taken over and remodeled, it is beautiful. Uh, they opened up that window in the back, see out the, the field and stuff back behind it. It's, it's a nice little view. It, it's, it's a pleasant place. Yeah, the James Event Center.
I didn't know it changed.
Yeah. Awesome, so. Okay, uh, at this time we'll move into our port, uh, public forum. Um, during the public forum, uh, if. Anybody from the public has anything they'd like to say, uh, we've requested that they fill out a speaker form. I do have one form here. Was there anybody else? Who wanted to speak that has not turned in a form yet? Okay, well, at this time we'll have Mr. Greg Cooper come forward.
He did, hold my time. I have something to pass out real quick.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you for serving. I appreciate it. It's a thankless job at times. So I'm here to talk about, um. Uh, the Johnson County bond. Last, uh, last month, you guys had a presentation from President Nichols about, um, it. I think there were some things that were left out in that presentation. So when considering a bond, what should a community do? There should be a few questions that need to be asked. So first, has the taxing entity earned the trust of the public as it relates to the stewardship of taxpayer money? Second, can the taxing entity responsibly add debt without placing undue hardship on its tax base? Three, are there other options in lieu of adding the debt? And four, does the proposal address true needs or wants? So I've cited a lot of sources here and a lot of numbers to help come to this conclusion. For you guys in the community to be so choose to, uh, to endorse or not endorse it. So can Johnson County responsibly add debt without placing undue hardship on its tax base? The, the answer is absolutely yes. Johnson County has continually accomplished a few things here, and this is in their independent audit that they do annually. So they approach the budget and county operations in a fiscally conservative manner, and they do this all the time. They're well positioned financially above average fund balances and independently been cited for the following. Managing funds in a conservative and judicious manner, intentionally not relying on volatile revenue sources like natural gas and minerals. To manage the county functions via policy to maintain an above average fund balance. And they practice operations that facilitate adequate funding in anticipation of hard economic times, which a lot of us are facing now. They manage debt well below the state's assigned peer group. Bond Review Board does a peer group that's puts the eight most like demographically similar counties. And they are in the bottom third demographically of the debt they carry, and they are in the bottom third of the debt that they have assigned to each taxpayer. The highest one being about a thousand eighty dollars. They're about eighty-three dollars per resident, very, very low. And their current debt is expected to be paid off in ten years. Most bonds are for thirty to forty, so they're well on their way to having their debt paid off. Regarding fiscal responsibility, um, have they developed practices that return revenues to the taxpayers? They have continually since two thousand sixteen, which is documented on the Johnson County website, approved a tax rate well below the voter approval tax rate. The highest one they can legally do without a trade election, and this year they did a no new revenue rule. They also have extended the tax base voluntary exemptions that they don't have to do. Senior citizens, disabled people and home setting exemptions that they've done. Every chance that they've gotten, they have tried to extend tax relief to the public and the citizens of Johnson County. They should be commended for that. Next page is the graph, the Bond Review Board. They show where they fall with debt and how it's impacting each citizen. The next page is directly out of their independent audits and quotes. The links are on there. If you want to see the entire well over two hundred page audit, but here's some key points in it. And then on the last page, um, so what determined that these project institutions, uh, need to facilitate funding? Well, you just heard about one tonight outside your city limits. Project two point one addresses outside your city limits to nine seventeen, has a chance to be accelerated. So what you guys were talking about tonight could be impacted by this bond. Very easy to get wrapped up in what affects city limits. But let's look at what brings people into Joshua and sends people out of Joshua. Um, so in closing. Um, they levy lower taxes. They operate under budget con- consistently and they extend more exemptions. Um, they've been very, very proactive in this, but here's the most important thing that everybody needs to remember. Johnson County Commissioners Court could have at any time in a smoke-filled room behind closed doors done a certificate of obligation and done this. But they made a conscious decision to bring this out to the taxpayers and let them decide on a general election ballot. And that deserves, uh, to be commen- commended no matter how you look at it. They could have absolutely have done a certificate of obligation. Nobody would have been wiser, but they've made a conscious decision to, to bring it to the voters. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Very much.
Okay, at this time we'll move into our consent agenda. Um, we have four items on here. Does anybody want to separate these or use, do them all at once? Okay, item number one was discuss considering possible action on the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Item number two is discuss considering possible action on a resolution approving City of Joshua investment report for the quarter ending September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Number three is discuss considering possible action on policy two point five covered applications and prohibited technology. And item number four is discuss considering possible action on revisions to policy four point nine longevity pay and service recognition program. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay, hearing that, I'll accept the motion.
Take a motion. We accept the consent agenda items.
Okay, I've got a motion by Shelley, seconded by Angela to, uh, accept all the agenda items as presented. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we'll move into our regular session at this time. This time we'll open up a public hearing on a request for zoning change regarding approximately point two, three, eight acres. Of land in the West Byers survey, uh, abstract number twenty-nine lots one, block four, block sixteen, original town of Joshua. County of Johnson, Texas, located at three oh nine Santa Fe to change from R one single family residential district to R two moderate density residential district. To allow for zero lot line detached units. Uh, Mike, we take over at this time, please?
Sir.
The mayor's gonna recuse himself from those further discussions because he's got a conflict.
The subject property has been planted, or we planted, I'm sorry, a two lot. The, uh, property is known R one single family, third major district. Three home, it's bill two, we're not by single family homes and according to the R two, moderate density residential district. Uh, area regulations with chapter fourteen A, felony ordinance, and I've attached those for that section of the ordinance. Both the, or planning and building commission had recommended approval at the October seventh.
Okay. To discuss, consider and take possible action approving.
Close the public hearing if there's no.
So we'll close the public hearing now and go to a discussion and take action of the ordinance. The zoning regarding approximately zero point two, three, eight acres of land in the Byers survey. Abstract number twenty-nine lot one through four, block sixteen, original town of Joshua, county of Johnson, Texas. Located at three oh nine Santa Fe. Change from R one single family to R two moderate density and allow for a zero lot line and a single family detached unit on separate lot.
I'd like to say if you have any questions against the, uh, property owner here.
Okay. Does the mayor have any questions that'd like to ask the property owner?
So, so this is having to be R two because of the zero lot line specifically?
Right.
Are there any other vacant lots around this property?
Uh, there's some for the, for the rear, I believe, that number vacant. And more, the more that's everything for stuff.
Owned by different people.
Right.
This is the old preacher's property, right? Stanley?
No, sir.
No.
This is old Fire Chief's property.
Who?
Bell, is that his name? Buddy, Buddy Bell, Bob Bell.
Buddy Bell sounds right.
Thirty years ago, Fire Chief's property. It is property that fell into the city's hand years ago because of past due. Uh, uh, abatement issues, and then we sold it off at market a few years ago.
Did Mr. Maddox buy that property?
Initially, yes, and he has since sold it to.
So why does it need to be a zero lot line property?
So the, uh, it has different regulations from our R one. So R one has a minimum square footage of ten, ten thousand square foot lot. This will be a thirty-seven fifty, three thousand seven hundred fifty square foot lot. Which means that is, uh, the minimum block width will be thirty-five and, and, and the minimum block depth will be a hundred. As opposed to the R one is, uh, sixty-five and one-twenty. Uh, the minimum square footage of a home will be one thousand as, as opposed to the R one. It's eighteen hundred square foot.
Well, and I'm all for bringing in affordable housing, like one hundred percent. My only concern about it is we've had conversations with other property around there. Whenever you start adding R two. Then it makes it easier because you're putting that buffer between R one and true multifamily type. That's, that was why I was questioning what else is around it. Um, but I'm all for, I mean, I'm all for, you know, of putting in affordable housing options. I just want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up for something surrounding where, we're saying. That because now we've gone from R one to R two, we can now do something with, you know, whatever the multifamily option is.
I think if you look at that area, the, the size of the home is right in there. So I mean, they're, they're not gonna get into an overbuilt scenario where they've got a house that. That is eighteen hundred square feet when everything around it is much smaller. And, and the smaller lots are, I, I think you'll find a lot of those. That's not that uncommon right around there either. You know, I, and I, I guess I, I understand the premise of, of opening a door, but that, quite honestly, the door's already open. They can ask for it, so can anybody else, and it, it fits there. It, it, it actually.
No, I have a problem with the, because the R two is different than, than. Because what I'm talking about is the seven acres. And I'll be honest, it's the seven acres directly behind me where they were trying to put in all those townhomes and stuff. But because it was going from R one directly to whatever that would have been.
Our home, yeah.
It would be what? It would be R two?
R two has different, uh, classifications. You can leave townhome, duplexes, from zero lot.
Zero lot lines. Okay. For some reason I was thinking that there was something in between.
Yeah, R two's got different classifications inside it. So effectively, yeah, that, it does go real quick. I was talking about it with, uh, be- before we started and, and I didn't fully understand the location it was and, and the adjacent properties. That I think it's okay in, in the location it's in, um, but, you know. It's a piece of property across an old goat farm and, uh, it, you know, kind of fits that, that area to be close to downtown. If, uh, if downtown, I was worried about if downtown grew, um, anymore, would it kind of limit that? But I don't think it would affect that. I think it'll actually help it, that, that kind of thing and the, being kind of prosperous in that, in that case, so. I'm okay with it myself.
Is that the smallest home that can be put on R two?
For a zero lot line.
Our minimum or the minimum?
What's the largest you can put on zero R? Check back to a twenty-five feet?
If you wanted to go, uh, two stories, you could go two stories, a sort of, what, a two thousand, or a three thousand.
I was pretty sure you weren't. Yeah, I figured it'd be something over a thousand.
We're looking at about six point twelve hundred, fourteen hundred square feet.
Why don't we state that then?
I'm sorry?
Why haven't stated that way instead of a thousand? A thousand scares, it scares me. Because we had a thousand square foot homes in a subdivision here and it did nothing but cause problems. You know, developers came in, they built the houses, they sold them, uh, they're two bedroom, one bath, one car garage, thousand square foot. And everybody around them complained to the council, why did we allow this on a ten thousand square foot lot? So I mean, that's the only question I have. I'm not again bringing. I'm not again bringing business in. I'm just concerned about if you do it, then they can do it. They'll come up here and the lawyers have told us before, won't you allow this? You can't stop it, you gotta let them do it too. So that's the only concern I have about it.
Well, it's still, it's still up to us to, to lower that limit, it's still a, every, every case has to come before us and be voted on, so it's it doesn't automatically say that they can.
A thousand foot is our policy, right?
Thousand foot, a thousand foot is our, is our minimum.
Is our minimum. So that's why, that's why.
That's why it says a thousand.
That's just.
That's our ordinance.
It's, it's not that he's doing that, it's.
Yeah, he's not requesting a thousand foot home, that's just the.
No, I understand the ordinance, but they're not going to go above the ordinance if they don't have to.
Well, they already just, yeah, they just said he was.
Yeah.
Huh?
He just said they were.
So what's he gonna go to? What are you proposing?
Twelve to fourteen hundred.
Twelve fourteen hundred square feet.
Is that in writing?
Yeah, it works.
I, no, no, that's not what I asked.
I'm, I'm sure we can ask him to do that when he's asking for something that the ordinance stipulates a number and that's a thousand feet, he has to meet that, I don't think.
Then can we change the ordinance and go up?
You can change the ordinance, but you can't do it tonight.
Can we make a stipulation?
Well, technically we'd have to go do something like a planned development where we're going to change based zoning requirements. And that, that'd be a whole different zoning classification, have to go back to PNC and council. We can obviously change the ordinance, but that's not going to be done tonight. I mean, that has to go back to PNC and council again and notices, et cetera.
Is your intention to sell this property or is your intention to rent the property yourself? Is your intention to sell the properties or are you planning on renting them out yourselves?
No, we're not renting now, I mean, we're, we're planning on, uh, I mean, we'd like to either build on them or, or sell them with whatever the requirements are, what we like to do. So I would like to add that, that the primary driver in, in this is the fact that under R one, the depth of the lots is a hundred and twenty feet, that's the requirement. All these lots, all along, Santa Fe, I agree, are a hundred and fifteen feet. So
You can't do anything with it.
If someone wants to build R one, it technically, you can't build it. So you'd have to come back in and get a variance for that. So this is, this, this group of, of lots. Um, it was planted in eighteen ninety four according to my survey. So it was part of the original town and so you had this disconnect between the existing, well, between the original planted lots and the new, and the zoning that occurred, whatever happened. So we're just trying to get everything inconsistent and develop a couple of starter homes.
We need starter homes.
That's our intent. We want to keep to, that was one of my requirements to our desire, so.
I mean, my kids can't afford different vacuums, I'm just, I'm all for starter homes, so.
That starter home means a lot different nowadays, anyway. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll ask for a motion.
I'm able to approve ordinance for zoning change regarding approximately zero point two, three, eight acres of land.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? All opposed? Two? Three to three? Who was it?
Shelley, what I caught was Merle and Angela voted against, everyone voted for.
All right.
He was slow to put his hand down.
Yeah, sorry.
He was slow. He fell asleep down there, so fourteen, fourteen?
Fourteen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Casey fell asleep.
He's having dinner back there.
Okay, I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Mayor.
So we're ready for item number three, discuss considering possible action on an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Mr. Peacock?
Mayor, I, I would suggest you move this down till after number five, because if you go on through four and five, you don't need this.
Okay. Any objection?
No objection.
So we'll move on to item number four, presentation of TDA Form A ten twenty four CDBG Section Three goals and concepts related to the CBG CDBG program and grant contract number CVD twenty three dash zero one three two.
I tried to get a few more numbers on there.
Numbers and acronyms, let's do it.
I only got him to it once, but he, when I saw it, I read CBD two. And he kept, he kept stopping and saying CDB and then he slipped and hit CBD at the end and I was like, okay. At least it's not missed me.
No, I've not been to that store.
Well, I just, it's funny how your mind will, would see something like that at speed reading. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a PowerPoint presentation that I need to present for the grant, to meet the grant requirements, so I'm gonna share my screen. I'm gonna try to. I'm gonna show the zoom for just a second, so hang on a second. That should be the dog, that should be the animal. Okay, so this presentation is a one oh two four, Section Three, presentation to Joshua CDB twenty three dash oh one thirty two. Uh, the city of Joshua recently received the following grant award, uh, grant contract number CDB twenty three dash oh one thirty two. The grant amount is for five hundred thousand and it is to be used for street improvements, Thomas Street has been selected for this project. Uh, this grant is funded through the Community Development Lot Grant, uh, via the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Texas Department of Agriculture. As a condition of the funding, the city of Joshua must comply with Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of nineteen sixty eight. To the greatest extent feasible, grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by CDBG funds to low and very low income persons. So in part, this means that Section Three businesses have the information to submit a bid or proposal for the project and also Section Three workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. Uh, for precise definitions, you are welcome to take a look at Texas CBBG Policy Issuance twenty dash oh one. A company may qualify as a Section Three business, uh, if they meet one of these, uh, these three criteria, is owned by a low income persons. It is owned by Section Eight Assisted Housing Residents for seventy five percent of all labor hours where the business is in a three month period are performed by Section Three workers. Those that are interested may register at this website below. The project is expected to include the following contracting opportunities. Uh, we have already selected the grant administrator, which is Grant Works. And then the engineer has also been selected at this point, it's Jacob Martin. Uh, one of the following items we'll have on the agenda is actually the acceptance of the bids for the contractor awarding it to Blacksmith Ventures LLC. What you see here is the bid tabulation, this was provided by Jacob Martin, it gives a breakdown of all the, um, materials to be purchased for the project. Uh, in order to qualify as a Section Three worker, your annual income must be below the accounting threshold for your family size and you also must be a current or recent youth field participant. Register your information and search for opportunities at the below listed websites. Then, Section Three workers that reside near the project location may also qualify as targeted Section Three workers for this project's surface area is defined by the map listed here on the presentation. The city of Joshua will track all hours worked on the project based on three categories of workers. This will require the collection of certain income information. Those categories are also shown below here. Uh, also included on here is a revised policy that can be found at TexasAgricultural dot com as well as the twenty four, C four, court seventy five, uh, here as well.
So that's, the presentation's over then, that's all the information.
Requirement met.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on then to item number, number five, discuss considering possible action regarding the Texas CDBG Project twenty three dash zero one three two, awarding construction to Blacksmith Ventures for a total construction contract of six hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Mr. Peacock?
Uh, the six eighteen, one eighty five was the low bid that came in. Amber, you got the rest of the information on this from?
I'm gonna find my place again.
These are not folks that were known to us, so the engineer was, was going through the vetting process with them.
Yeah, this project, we had to do a little bit differently, um, we did the bids for it, we collected, uh, three total bids, uh, all very different, the low bid was the six eighteen, which was roughly two hundred thousand above what our engineers had estimated. Um, they had other similar projects come back the same way. Um, it, it's kind of is what it is, so we had the option to either go out and rebid it and add in some deducts so we could pull some stuff out of the contract as it went along. Or the other option would have been to let Jacob Martin, uh, go ahead and move forward with the references for Blacksmith. And so they have completed those references and they found no, um, issues with any of the references that were collected. I do have Chrissy here from, uh, Jacob Martin, the engineer, if y'all have any questions regarding any of the bids itself, but um, between Jacob Martin, myself and Kristen, we thought it might be best just to go ahead and accept the bids. We do have some leftover funds from a previous project that, um, we will request to utilize some of those to go ahead and just move forward with the project. Because worst case scenario, if we were to rebid it, we, it could come back even higher, um, so. Base bid on it. There is a worksheet that's attached with Jacob Martin's reference letter that gives a breakdown of the, um, hold on, scrolling.
Get down.
Hundred seventy two pages. Even the presentation wasn't that long, I'm not sure.
This grant pending the completion of the project or is it going to be received?
So we're already, um, doing draws, we've done a, a payment or two to the grant administrator as well as to Jacob Martin. Um, so the funds have been approved for it, um.
So the cost is above the grant, do I understand that?
It is, that's.
And where does that come from?
Just cost of, of construction.
I understand, I mean, where do we get the money?
The, the extra money will come, that's the item that we passed, if you approve it, we'll go back and fund it with some leftover funds that we've got set in. Setting in CIP.
That breakdown for the reference letter for Jacob Martin, that should be attached to that agenda item. I know. I apologize. You do. It's just, there's a hundred and seventy two pages. But they're hyper. Okay, got it?
Like way of longevity.
Fund and breakdown, well, you have that deal that I sent to Taff. My thing, it's in here, it's the staff report, it has the fund and breakdown. It's three hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred for project funds, seventy five thousand engineering, thirty four thousand, nine hundred for the grant administrator, total five hundred thousand. That shows a fifty thousand city match.
So the total of six hundred and eighteen thousand includes the monies for the grant administrators?
Yeah.
It, it, it's everything. Okay.
The only thing I noticed on there was striping, there was no cost on striping. I think it was twenty six hundred and fifty.
Yeah. Christie, I think we did discuss the strapping during that, we decided not to, because most of the residential streets here are not strapping, so they withheld it.
I'm a very rad street.
Can we buy our own strapping machine? Do you have one?
Okay, so, um, the grant amount, like I said, less the grant administrator, less the engineering was at three hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred dollars, the city has to match fifty thousand. So the total construction portion of the project is four hundred and forty thousand, one hundred dollars. The base bid that we received, which is from Blacksmith, was for six hundred and eighteen thousand, one eighty five. Uh, we did change, um, the headwalls, there's a, a number of draft approaches in this project. We were going to do pour in place headwalls and we changed to, what are they called, Chrissy? SETs, um, which Kristen actually thought was a better option and everybody kind of agreed. So we're changing those headwalls out, it reduced the price by thirty two thousand, two hundred. Um, and then there is, so that brought it down to five eighty five, nine eighty five. And then there's a twenty five percent contingency included in this contract as well. So the additional city funds that would be, uh, necessary are two hundred and ninety two thousand, three eighty one and twenty five cents. So this bit, this full contract ha, does have a completion date that we have to meet in order to, um, meet the grant requirements, so. We do, if we did decide to rebid it, we do have time, but it does push us back pretty far into the project, so. I think either way, it is a gamble because we may not get as many bids, we may, or they may be higher than what this is or vice versa, we may get a bunch and it could be lower, but, um.
How realistic is that, is it for us to meet that deadline if we go with the current bid?
Very, the, the construction timeline, yeah, very, we have, we, we, we could very likely rebid it and still be on all that timeline, so we have a long time if we stay with this. Uh, I think what I was trying to get is if we do go to rebid, we'll have to contractually shrink the construction time to make sure that they meet that deadline.
And what is that, what is that deadline?
The number.
Yeah, the next year.
I'll be there.
In ten of twenty twenty five, right? I can't remember the exact day, but it's October, I think it's in one.
So there's no concern with weather and?
I mean, it could, I mean, it very well could be a factor, but there still was enough of a gap on the end, but but again, you run the risk of who knows what the economy is going to be doing there, who knows what materials are going to cost and I, I, it's unbelievable either way.
The research that was done on, uh, Blacksmith Ventures.
Uh, Jacob Martin did the references.
There was.
There was no red flags anywhere. We've we've used unknown companies before and gotten burnt bad. So we're we're real concerned, I'm I'm real concerned about that.
The only, the only partially negative comment had to do with paperwork and once it was amended, they could. We normally ask questions about their performance, changers, communication, every type of damage. All those responses came back positive. And they're used to doing these type of product or projects as well.
It meets requirements for them.
Any more questions? Anything else you wanted to say, Amber?
I just need direction on whether or not, you know, they're okay with moving forward with the project and selecting Blacksmith for the project.
Anything to add? Okay, Mike, we have any?
It needs to be redone, so it's definitely, there's a need.
Initially, we were looking at this being not a full street reconstruction. They'd initial, the initial plans had it split, so I'm happy that we're actually able to do the entire street, even if it is a little bit over budget. I don't think many people would be very happy with a partially complete.
Okay. So we will, I'm open for a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the the venture.
I'll say it. Okay. We have a motion by Mike, seconded by Dakota, to accept the bid on T X C D B G project twenty three dash oh one three two awarding construction to Blacksmith Ventures for a total construction cost of six hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, so we'll now go back to item three. Discuss considering possible action on ordinance amending fiscal year budget twenty twenty fives.
Well, the budget amendment that submitted would be for two hundred and ninety two thousand, three hundred and eighty one dollars. That would make up the the balance of the the bid plus a twenty five percent contingency. Twenty five percent, normally we do normally less than that on projects, but this is an old street. Several pretty old homes. When you start cutting into those streets, you find all kinds of things that you didn't know were there. So we've got this, it's appropriate to have the twenty five percent so that if we run into some gas line or utility line that nobody knew was there, there's money there to fix it without without stopping the project. And the engineers believe that that was an adequate amount, that was their recommendation. The funding would come through the remains of a tax note that was taken out two years ago by the city. Where we started working on the municipal project, there's a little over half a million dollars remaining in that tax note. City streets is one of the things listed for that, so it falls within the guidelines of that tax note. I don't think we're going to need all of it, but it's cleaner to go ahead and get it all there. What we don't use can be returned. The remaining balance of that tax note will just remain in C I P. That's where it's setting now, and that's where these funds would come from, to make up the difference.
Any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion, we approve the proposed budget amendment.
I'll second it. Okay, got a motion by Shelley, seconded by Dakota, to amend our fiscal year twenty twenty five budget as suggested by Mr. Peacock. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, item number six, discuss considering possible action on approving the site plan regarding point two six five oh acres of land known as lot five R block four, original town Joshua West buyer survey abstract number twenty nine, County of Johnson, Texas. Locally known as two four North Main to allow for construction of commercial professional building. Mr. Monaloo.
Thank you all.
That plan approval shall be required for all new non-residential development, buildings within the district. Available within the H D overlay district shall be subject to design review and part of the black man review process. Specifically noted within this section, all requirements of this ordinance apply to the H D overlay district. Design review is is required in this district to ensure that development within the district is in accordance with design guidelines for H D. And that proposed development is architecturally compatible within the historic character of the area. Heritage preservation committee and planning and zoning commission recommended approval at the October seventeenth.
All right, am I having questions?
Is this something that had to be surrounding neighbors or businesses or anything had to be notified, or just a heritage overlay district? And P and Z. I wonder if if it's anything, anybody around would wouldn't mind. I don't think so, but it's just something that popped in my mind that is it something that neighbor would not favor.
Everybody's been notified as the hearings progressed originally, correct?
Well, no, this is not a part of the public hearing, but all the, all of those lots down through the H D are zoned commercially.
Okay, so there's no need to. Any other questions? Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'll move to through site plan regarding zero point two six five oh acres of land.
I'll second.
A motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela, to approve the site plan for two or four North Main and to allow construction for a commercial professional building. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number seven, discuss considering possible action on the approval of new playground equipment and contract with Cunningham Recreation for the city park. Mr. Stephen.
All right. Okay, so B board has approved the purchase and contract of playground by Cunningham Recreation for the price of six hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty six. This cost will be assisted with a grant funding that covers a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars per cent of the total cost of the playground. But today I have with me, I have Hunter Baron and Bruce Thompson from Cunningham Recreation. We'll be able to answer any questions when we talk a little bit more about the later.
I'm mayor, it's named council members, like he said, my name is Hunter Baron. I represent Cunningham Recreation and I am the sales manager in the Dallas and central Texas area. And next to me is Mr. Bruce Thompson, he's our game time regional manager in the Midwest. And before you, we have our play on designation, which is N D S. I'm going to let Mr. Thompson speak about that for a second and what that means. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions on the equipment layout or anything like that.
Excited to see we have some future playground decks. As you mentioned, my name is Bruce Thompson, I'm with Game Time. We are a company that is owned by Play Four and Play Four owns forty five other organizations, like Game Time, their outdoor recreation business and outdoor facilities. So we are the largest playground company they own. Everything we do is purpose driven and it starts with research. And so just three quick areas I want to cover off. It's, you know, we make an investment like this, first off, it's about really making sure it's about the children. And because of our research and what you're hearing, Stephen is elected and we need to elect him to move forward with what's called a national demonstration site. So this is based upon evidence-based research on all of the curriculum that is right for youth physical fitness. This is accredited in schools, it basically is built upon the six activities that are developed for kids. And when you're a kid, it's about balancing, it's about breakgating, older head climbing, it's about climbing, it's about swinging, spinning and sliding. And these six activities are all about the development of children for physical, social, emotional, sensory, communication and cognitive. And this is research-based. So this will be a destination where kids will be able to come into play, burn energy, and continue to build relationships and creativity. You'll be outstanding for school age kids, kids to come, and it'll be a destination for children. And that's kind of what the next phase of my community piece. So being a national demonstration site, we will do extensive research once this agreement was formed. We'll help you understand the impact positive for the community from youth fitness, health, well-being, as we all know, when kids are healthy, they end classes. Hopefully, they also do better on tests, but there will be a financial factor that will happen. And we'll do that research through the data sources that we have to tell you the estimates, least the positive impact of the community. Because it will also create a destination for model around. You'll be one of thirteen hundred sites nationwide that we have within the national demonstration program. And parents and families seek these out and go to them because they know they're designed based on these best practices. Okay, and then the last thing is the company, as I mentioned to you, I'm with Game Time. We are a company that all of our products are manufactured in Fort Payne, Alabama. I stand in front of you on behalf of three hundred of us employees that is excited to fit this playground and facilities. And I know that ninety five years of experience from new hunters and owners who've been band with. Cunningham Recreation and Hunter has introduced himself, we have been partners, Game Time has been a business for ninety five years. Cunningham Recreation has been a partner and distributor for fifty eight years. So they've done quite a few in Florida. So we're excited about the opportunity and if there are any questions you may have, hopefully I'll hear some thoughts on them.
Questions? The grant money, what's what's the grant about?
So as an organization, as I mentioned to you, so from manufacturing, our cycle of production used to be very strong up until, you know, winter months. And so some twenty years ago, to keep our factories running year round, keep our families, there are employees that and keep things working, we put this grant program in place. So basically provide a hundred percent matching funds on certain components within the playground that you're purchasing. So that's what we're giving back that allows us to have you purchase this product and have it be produced in our plant during our slower months, which are, as I talked on Monday when I was here, and now are busier ones.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what it is. So you're benefiting by well over a hundred dollars or a hundred thousand additional dollars in the value of equipment now that you're able to afford.
Once the equipment is is made and delivered, how long to to install and get it up and going?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. We have an estimated date around two to three weeks. Due to our direct bulk technology, everything's laser cut, manufacturing, triple quality control before it gets out. It's a lot easier to install, it's a lot faster to as well. So based on the site work, we're suggesting around two to three weeks, but weather permitting, of course. I know we're going to have some dates booked in there in case, you know, due to rain or any implement weather that might slow us down. But normally it's something like this, this size, these components, two to three weeks, yes, sir.
So if we place the order Monday, we start production, how, when could we expect this to be up and we're kid ready?
Yes, sir. So our average lead time is around seven to eight weeks. So normally I'll kind of explain how the process goes. We'll go to the engineering design process, we have our engineers stamp it all for approval, and we'll go to the manufacturing process. And then in eight weeks, it will be to the installers and they will bring it to the site. In the meantime, Stephen, myself and the installer will be proactive, going to the site, making sure we have everything done. And then as soon as all the equipment is accounted for, I myself and the installers have done inventory, then we'll get to start on the install as soon as possible. Unless we coordinate it with you all, of course, with your permission, Stephen as well.
So Steve, what's what's your thought process as to when this is going to be ready?
So we're looking at probably mid-January, possibly end of February. It'll be well before spring, well before splashback season will build in. So by the time the kids get out of school, they're going to do the playground.
Any other questions?
Is there going to be any kind of security fence around it while it's being constructed or in work, so we?
Yes. Equipment's on site, there is a plan in place, we'll go ahead and put a security fence around it, that way it's not vandalized from us with the guarantee structure.
I'm assuming y'all know how we got here. And we're very anxious to make sure that we're not.
We don't think that likely.
Okay.
Also, I was going to ask you, we had talked about last year adding disc golf to the park. Does this incorporate that, or is that something we're going to add outside of that?
That would be a separate item.
Separate item, that we did.
Hopefully I can comfort everybody. When I was in Mansfield, I was CPSI playground inspector and five of Mansfield's playground park from Cunningham Recreation and Game Time. Their oldest playground, twenty five years old, and hopefully go another ten, fifteen years. I know right now they're currently renovating parks, so they're going to go ahead and replace the playground. So that playground's in pretty good shape and it can go for another, you know, like I said, ten, fifteen years. I've worked with Game Time directly, I've worked with Cunningham Water and Replacement Parks. I've never personally had an issue with any kind of customer service, look at warranty repairs, even on a twenty five year old playground, I'm still able to get parts. I'm still getting parts within two to six weeks, which is pretty standard practice for most playground companies. I personally never had an issue with this company. I trust them, I see their products, it's pretty quality.
We have game time stuff in the park now.
Yeah.
It was originally put in.
Oh, we want to hear.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much. So I would accept the motion.
Make a motion that we approve this recreation equipment.
Okay. And the contract.
And the content.
Got a motion by Mike, seconded by Merle, to approve the new playground equipment and the contract with Cunningham Recreation for the city park. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Only thing I ask Stephen. When you can give phone dates, we need to get them out to the public as soon as possible. Updates along the way, but when we've got a phone date, we want to, we want to sell it big. There's a lot of people anxious for that playground. The world is on your shoulders, my dear.
We need to designate who signs the contract.
So what's going to happen is as soon as I get, I'll get an estimated shipment. Have the installers on site, I'll also communicate with A D F, who's our transportation, I have stayed on right now. So we'll coordinate with them as well, if anything with Game Time, it's obviously directly involved.
Okay.
So we do have some players who within the game top organization, they already discussed and done smoothly. We understand, you know, in fact, you guys, I've had some troubles, we want to, you know, we want to step up for you guys and let you know that. And we also come back with fifty million dollars of liability insurance, so if anything happens, we're going to take care of it, but you have our work ethic. We're going to keep you guys updated, keep you on the loop, as well as Stephen do as well. As soon as it leaves the factory, we will be one of the first ones to know.
I do want to add, at the B board meeting, they will be on site with a construction trailer, so they will be there. We wanted to worry about tracking them down or anything like that, they'll be on site the whole time. But they'll be on site in the construction, right?
That is correct. I will have scheduled visits and also the random visits too as well. So I might not tell them someday, one morning I might show up just to make sure that everything's going smoothly as well. If I can't be there, I'll make sure that everyone there, Cunningham, we're be able to come out there. And if anything happens or they need to be out there for something, if I can't, one of them will be out there too as well. So you will have direct contact with us during the whole process. We will be directly involved and I will, as I've done a lot of installations, make sure that this one goes smoothly.
Awesome, thank you very much.
And there's already an article prepared, just in case tonight that it has been approved and it's moving forward and then go out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Pre-planning this letter. I know my council so well.
Okay, let's move into the staff reports. Does anybody have any questions about any of the staff reports? Any of the staff have anything they want to report? Any of the staff have anything they want to report?
I want to say thank you for the employee appreciation that y'all did. It was nice.
It was fun.
It was. It was a beautiful day.
Oh, a little bit on the warm side. The breeze and the shade.
It's.
Turned out pretty well, so, but we, we did have a good time. Uh, we had uh about fifty-four, fifty-five people.
Forty-eight, forty-nine in my picture, so.
Okay. Um, we had several that came.
Just a few kids too.
Came, came and went and everything, but we had a good time at the employee picnic. Yeah, y'all didn't come, missed it.
I would have been there, but I was at the Come and Take It Festival and.
You went and took it.
I was coming and taking.
Okay, uh, at this time, uh, we are going to recess into. Uh, a, an executive session pursuant to Texas Code, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, consultation with city attorney. Five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, Texas Government Code to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial financial information. And pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, the Texas Government Code to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. So at eight one. Okay, eight thirty-four, I'm calling this meeting back to order. There's no action need to be taken on the executive session items. Uh, does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to see on next month's agenda? Nope. Okay, so at eight thirty-five, this meeting's adjourned.